Good evening, councillors, members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, just draw your attention to the fire precautions on the all screens. In the event of a fire alarm going off, it will be for real, no practices are planned this evening, so please make your way rapidly across the road to the canopy outside Waitrose. Can I ask you all to switch your mobile phones either silent or to off, please, so that we don't get too many disturbances? We do have public speaking tonight, so I remind you of that, we are webcast. Members of the public, just like to make the comment that as a committee we understand that matters under consideration tonight can be emotive, to put it mildly. However, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and this committee, and refrain from any booing, cheering, or any other form of disturbance. It is a meeting held in public, it is not a public meeting. Now, let's move on to the business. Minutes of the meeting took place on the 2nd of March, been on the table for the last 30 minutes, are you content I've signed them as a true record of that meeting? Thank you. Emma, apologies for absence.
We have apologies from councillor Martin Lear.
Thank you very much. And moving on, Emma, members with declared interest?
Yes, before the meeting, we've received non-percuniary interest in item A1 from councillors Stephen Hill, Mike Hodge, John Fraser, Julia Potts, John Willisum, Carol Coburn, as they are all Farnham Town councillors, who's the applicant of the application, and we've got a pecuniary interest in A1 from Chris Storey, councillor Chris Storey, who will leave the room during consideration of that item. We also have a pecuniary interest on item B1 from John Fraser, who will also leave the room during consideration of that item. Thank you.
Any other... Sorry, I'm trying to remember if I'm... Thank you. And, yes, noted. Thank you. Emma, are there any questions from members of the public?
Number saved, chairman.
And moving on then to item five, any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation since the last meeting? Peter?
Okay, thank you, chairman. I think no more members won't have met me before, but my name's Peter Cleveland, I'm the interim development control manager, and I've filled the post since Elizabeth moving up to the head of planning role. Just to update you, there's two matters to update you on with regards to legislation. The first one relates to the custom build and self-build housing register regulations 2016, and this requires the council to hold a self-build and custom-build house building register, and to have regard to this in their planning, housing, land disposal, and regeneration functions. The council already holds such a register, and currently with only a small number of individuals registered on it at this time. The council is required, in meeting its housing need, to take account of this demand, and any provisions to meet demand would be a material consideration in favour of a scheme to be considered. Whilst no scheme to be considered this evening proposed either custom or self-build, any future applications for such development must take this into account. So that's a general update on that. There's also an update on permitted development allowances and some changes and some temporary permissions and along those lines. In May 2013, a number of temporary permitted development rights were introduced, which allowed the following development to take place without the need for planning permission. These have now been made permanent following an amendment to the consolidated general permitted development order 2015. The first one is the conversion of an office to residential. This temporary allowance was made permanent as of the 6th of April 2016, and that was subject to a new condition, allowing local planning authorities to consider impacts of noise from commercial premises on intended occupiers. And the other change to that permanent information is that the development will have to take place within three years. The other permanent change is in relation to conversion of a laundrette to residential properties, subject to a prior approval process, that will allow councils to consider impact of changes on adequate provision of such services, subject to that review, that would be a permitted developer allowance as well. Further amendments are proposed to come into force next year regarding conversion of light industrial units to residential dwellings. However, this is due late 2017, therefore an appropriate update regarding the conditions of this will be provided at that stage. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Councillor Frost?
Thank you very much indeed, chairman. I've said this before when we've had this item, but none of us will remember what the officer has said when we get home, because our minds will be on the planning applications. It would be very helpful if we could have these notes in writing, so that we can add it to our file of papers relating to planning.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I will circulate that point to members of the committee. Thank you.
Councillor Storey?
Thank you, chairman. I'm sorry, the first item about self-builds and so on, frankly, I didn't understand it. I understand that we have to take it into account, but I wasn't sure whether we were supposed to take it into account positively or negatively, or what we were supposed to do, other than that we have to have a register.
Peter?
Okay, thank you, chairman, and thank you for that question. Yes, so it basically requires the council to have a register in place, so to hold a register, and on that list, the number of residents that have an interest in either a custom-built property or a self-built property. What we then do of that information is feed that into, say, like a SMA, or the Strategic Housing Market Assessment Document, which looks at the housing needs for the borough into the future. So if there was to say a significant amount, or whatever level of amount of need was identified from having that register, we need to account for that in moving forward of our housing policy, and in our recommendations for housing mix and housing tenure mix moving forward. So if there's a significant need, and a scheme was bringing forward a certain element of self-build or custom-build to meet that need, that would be a material consideration that would weigh in favour, because it's meeting an identified need of housing within the borough. Hopefully that helps from the point of view. Thank you, chairman.
So can I come back on that, chairman? Yes, right, I understood that. So is this in addition to the defined housing need that comes from other sources, or is it included within the defined housing need from other sources? And do we have to allocate those spaces from our existing SMA?
This would be in addition to what we've got already, and it would incorporate the requirements overall for the borough, but it is in addition to our current requirement. But in looking at that, that may offset some of the other requirements, so once that assessment's made of what we know what we need, we can balance that out and set out what the specific need for the borough is, and if there is a significant need, we would have to look to allocate to meet that need as well through the local plan process. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Peter. Just make an introduction, should there be any legal matters tonight, Barry Devlin is sitting to Peter's right, Louise Giandl, senior planning officer, sitting right in front of me, Tim Brighton, Kylie Taylor, and Elizabeth Sims, I think we all know. So having made the introductions, members, let's continue on. Thames Basin Heath Special Protection Area Position Statement on the Current Capacity. The table's printed in the agenda, and it's been updated with the latest SANG figures. And Elizabeth, have you anything to add to that?
Thank you, chairman. There's nothing to add to the report, the report is for noting. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Fraser?
Thank you, chairman. I've got two questions, but I'd like to start with some thank yous. I'd like to thank the officers for the figures they gave me, the nine-year SANG total of section 106 contributions up to the end of February. It's now in the overview and scrutiny agenda, but for those who don't know that, it's close to a million pounds as of the end of February, contributions that have been devoted, as far as we're told, to the enhancement of Farnham Park. So thank you for the figures. I want to ask one question concerning the letter written by an appeal inspector, Geoffrey Winslow, concerning planning application WA 2014 number 2237, which he wrote on the 2nd of March, and that concerns a house in Kiln Lane. And the letter was pretty critical of Waverley Council's administration of the SANG, saying that they did not have a community infrastructure levy in place, and we were in breach of regulation 123, sub clause 3, 2010, regarding the unilateral undertaking and clause, the section 106, SANG contributions. That letter, I would like, please, if it is possible, for you to tell me whether that letter will be placed on the table in the avoidance strategy consultation. And my second question is, what do the officers have, however, Plan B, should in fact the SANG allowance of Farnham Park be remaining at 21.25 hectares? How do we thereafter increase the SANG allowance?
Thank you, chairman. I would start, chairman, by just pointing out that, of course, this report that comes to Western Committee is largely just to update members on the remaining capacity of Farnham Park, and as we've said many times in this chamber, it's not really intended to be an opportunity to debate the integrity of the policy, or consider the development of the policy going forward. But seeing I am here and the question's been asked, I will endeavour to succinctly just pick up the two points. The first question that was asked was in relation to an appeal decision, where an inspector seemed to have given the impression that he felt that, following the changes to SIL Regulation 123 of the 6th of April last year, we were no longer able to carry on collecting SANG contributions lawfully, because it conflicted with that regulation. In fact, our view was that the inspector's view was wrong, and in fact, it conflicts with many other inspectors' decisions which say the opposite. Other inspectors have agreed with the council that the policy is completely lawful, that in fact, because the monies are collected and pooled for the improvement and maintenance enhancement of the SANG, as opposed to the provision of, I'm looking at my lawyer colleague here, that in fact, it is fully compliant with the requirements of the SIL regulation. So what I would say, Councillor Fraser, is that was a rogue comment from inspector, and it really was up to the applicant to challenge that inspector, as far as the planning authority was concerned, it wasn't a point we were required to challenge, but the appeal was one for the recipient, the appellant, to challenge, because I think the inspector had got to that point wrong. Coming on to the more general point about what happens going forward, as you'll be aware, the council is in the process of preparing its new local plan, and the identification of additional SANG to support the additional housing allocations in Farnham when they are agreed, will have to be part and parcel of that plan, and so that is part of the local plan process. Thank you very much, chairman.
Elizabeth, thank you very much for that. If that was off-the-cuff answers, that was brilliant, and just shows what a master of the subject you are. I would like to think that we all as members give you the questions beforehand, and note that the officers have got plenty of time outside this committee meeting to address this particular delicate subject, I think, but we all have an interest in it, particularly in the Western Committee. So thank you very much indeed for the questions, but thank you, Elizabeth, for such a clear answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have found it quite difficult to find other forum within which to discuss this matter, this being a regular item six, I take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Fraser, noted. But the report, is that noted, members? Thank you very much indeed. Applications for planning permission. Just make the point again, as I made it to the previous meeting, site inspections, when you get the agenda, if you want a site inspection, as we did on this occasion, please call the officers so that we can arrange the site visit prior to committee meetings. It was very helpful, and I thank you, councillor, for making the site visit a request, but we do occasionally get people standing up at a meeting and asking for a site visit when there is plenty of time to have done it beforehand. If we organise the site visits on the day before committee meetings, the officers only have to attend one morning, not separate mornings for each committee, so please bear that in mind. Any site visits will be held on the 12th of April 2016, at a time to be agreed, certainly not before 10 o'clock in the morning, so that we avoid school traffic.
10th of May at 10.
Oh, sorry, 10th of May, why am I just reading what I've written? My apologies, 10th of May, at a time to be agreed. Right, item A1, which is subject to blitz speaking, WA 2015 1694, erection of nine dwellings associated access, parking, amenity space, and landscaping, following demolition of all buildings on site, removal of hard standing at 19 Knoll Farm, Olpout Lane, Farnham. Tim, we'd like to introduce this application, please.
Thank you, chairman. Members, the site measures 0.95 hectares, and outlined here in red on the screen. It's located to the west of Old Park Lane and north of Middle Old Park, north of Farnham Town. Access to the site is via an existing vehicle access in the south-east corner onto Old Park Lane. The site comprises several buildings, structures, and hard standing, and a sand school, as you can see here. The site has lawful use as commercial question facility. The site surroundings consist of two residential plots to the east, and farm to the south, and further residential plots to the west here. This is an aerial photograph from 2012, really just to help you show some of the existing buildings on site. The access to the site is here, off Old Park Lane, this is Middle Old Park, which runs to the south. You note here, see, the sand school and associated question buildings. As outlined, the site comprises a variety of existing buildings associated with the lawful use. Just go through some of these quickly. This large building here comprises horse stabling and storage. Again, here, this is another brick structure. Here, this is the long, stable building currently on site, again, another brick structure. And again, here, just some other existing buildings that are on the site. And again, here, further stabling. The proposal itself is for the erection of nine dwellings following demolition of existing buildings, structures, and hard standing on the site. The proposed dwellings would comprise a mix of two two-bedroom dwellings, four four-bedroom dwellings, and three five-bedroom dwellings. The proposed layout, before you hear, would take the form of a courtyard style, with each dwelling facing inwards. Each proposed dwelling would have private garden space, which would extend to the site boundaries. Access would be taken from the existing access point in the south-east corner. Parking would be provided for each dwelling on site in accordance with the council guidelines. The design of the dwellings have been designed to be barn-style properties centred around a feature farmhouse, building which is plot seven. Turning to the elevations of the proposed dwellings, this is proposed dwellings plots one and two, which will be four-bedroom dwellings, comprise a pair of semi-detached barn-style properties. The external materials will be facing brick flint with dark-stained timber cladding and clay roof tiles. Traditional barn hip ends are also incorporated in the buildings, along with low dormer windows and conservation roof lights. Here's the floor plans for plots one and two, really just your standard level of accommodation, ground floor and first floor. Plots three to six would be four properties. They were similar in design and scale to plots one and two. Plots three and six on either end would be two-bedroom, and plots four and five central would be four-bedroom. Again, materials would be the same as plots one and two. In terms of the floor plans, access to the two-bedroom units on each end would be from the side, and the two central four-bedroom properties from the front. Plot seven, which would mention the feature farmhouse-style property proposed, obviously different to others, but making use of traditional materials, including flint, and this would be a five-bedroom property. The clay roof tiles for this property would match the others in the scheme. And again, the floor plans for plot seven, really entrance from the centre, and the standard accommodation at ground floor and first floor. Plot seven would be served by a detached garage, again, with traditional design. Plot eight would be a detached dwelling, really a smaller version of the building proposed for plots one and two, again, with the materials to match. And again, ground floor and first floor accommodation. Plot nine, this would be identical scale to plot eight, however, with three low-front-facing dormer windows, and single-storey orangery adjoined to the side. This dwelling would incorporate some existing brick walls of the former Brickworks, as part of the garden boundary in there, by retaining this heritage feature, which is here. And again, the elevation, floor plans for plot nine, you see orangery coming out here, and bedroom accommodation above. The application includes two section drawings. In terms of parameters of scale, members will note the table on page nine in the agenda which sets out the key dimensions of the proposed dwellings. The proposal includes site excavation and levelling, which would set the dwellings on site lower than the existing ground level. Thereby, ridge heights of the proposed dwellings would be set just lower than the existing neighbouring dwellings to the east of the site. So, members here, section AA, which is cut through looking east of the site, east through the site, they have surveyed that the existing property known as Knoll Farm, just beyond to the east, has a ridge height there, and just to give you an indication of the proposed ridge heights for the dwellings for the scheme. And again, section BB, looking north through the site, over here is the ridge height survey for Knoll Farm, so again, just to give you an idea of heights and parameters of scale. The application has also been accompanied with some 3D visual aids, really this one here, taken looking west, you can see the existing access here, which is proposed to be reused, really just to give you an idea and help put it into some context, you have the existing residential properties here to the east, some over here to the west, and Park Farm here, the south-west. You'll see this centred around a courtyard-style design, whereby the parking for the properties would be centred within the site, thereby reducing its visual impact in the surrounding area. Again, another 3D visual looking from the entrance. And again, looking back from the other corner, so existing neighbouring properties to the east, and there's site entrance here. So that just helps you give an idea of the scheme in context. So for the benefit of members who couldn't make the site visit, this is the site entrance to the site. The site, the proposal would reuse this, and obviously resurface it, that's to be agreed via condition. This is looking within the site itself, you can note hard standing here at the moment, stabling here, and the large commercial building here. This is the building that fronts Middle Old Park, which is beyond this hedgerow here. Looking north within the site again, this is me near the western side of the site, existing structures here would all be removed. And again, looking east, just to also give you an idea of some of the type of vehicles that would utilise the existing site. Existing stabling here. And this view taken from the north-east corner, as I mentioned earlier with the section drawings, this is the ridge height of Knoll Farm I refer to, in comparison to the proposed, another neighbouring property here called Meadow Farm as well, but that's just to help you give you an idea of the site in its existing situation. Members, in terms of determining issues with this application, I'll draw your attention to the matters of judgment on the right-hand side. However, chairman, we do want to talk about the location of development, which we have put on the left-hand side. No, that hasn't, okay, that should be on the left-hand side, apologies, I'll talk about it. The site is accessed via an unmade vehicle access route, which is also a public bridleway. Although this makes using vehicles difficult to access a site, the vehicle generation for the lawful use of the site has to be taken into consideration in the assessment of the proposed residential scheme. Upgrading works to the bridleway are to be undertaken prior to commencement of construction activity, and after construction activity is finished, secured via a legal agreement. This would provide improvements to the bridleway surface, which would allow easier vehicle access to and from the site, and benefit other existing uses of this bridleway. Notwithstanding this, the site is within walking and cycling distance from Farnham Town centre. It is therefore considered that the site is in a relatively sustainable location, providing good access to amenities within Farnham. So, members, just to confirm, the location of development is supposed to be in the matters of principle section, and then the reasons why. Countryside visual impact and landscape character. The site is previously developed and comprises several buildings and areas of hard standing. The existing visual impact of these buildings is material in the assessment of the visual impact of the proposed residential dwellings. The proposal will result in a substantial change to the existing character of the site. However, the scale, form, and design of the residential dwellings are considered to harmonise with the rural character of the surrounding area. The built form would be well-contained within the site. The visual impact and impact on the countryside is of course a matter of judgment for members to make this evening. Residential amenity. The position of the development would retain suitable distances to neighbouring properties. Whilst the proposed residential development would be visible from neighbouring properties, it's not considered to result in material harm and result in acceptable form of development. The site is located in a rural area where surrounding noise generation is limited, and therefore the construction phase would create noise and construction vehicle movement. However, noise impact from construction vehicles in operation is not material planning consideration. The county highway authority has recommended a condition to ensure that numbers of HGV vehicle movements per day are controlled. The site surroundings also include a farm and agriculture to the south. Although some of the proposed dwellings and garden curridges with a but Middle Old Park, where beyond lies Park Farm, officers do not consider this future relationship with the farm would be substantial to cause long-term conflict. Members, I can turn your attention now to the update sheet. We've received two additional letters of representation, and additional submission from the applicant. A summary of those are there for you, and officer response. Following the committee's site visit, officers have reviewed the conditions recommended in the agenda, and can recommend an additional addition of wording to condition 15, which is to require details of foul sewage scheme to be submitted. So, chairman, the recommendation A therefore is advised to read as follows... That's subject to the completion of a section 106 agreement to secure upgrade works to the public bridle way, SUDS management plan, open space management plan and SPA contributions within three months of the committee meeting, and subject to conditions one to nineteen, including the additional wording for condition fifteen to seek foul sewage scheme, and informative set out in the agenda permission be granted. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Tim. I'll turn to Peter now.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to update members just on one point of fact. On page twenty-nine of your agenda, we talk about the development plan policies and proposals, and that at the bottom outlines the current position of the local plan and the progress and timescale for the emerging local plan coming forward. There's one point today, a revised timetable for the publication of the local plan has been put forward on the website and agreed, and so at the bottom of the paragraph which commences, the council was in the process of replacing adopted 2000 local plan, that should, the plan in publication should be July 2016 rather than April 2016. And I just thought that is relevant to update that point as a matter of fact for you, and that is also relevant to the later application to be considered. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Peter. But we now move to, okay, we now move to public speaking, and I first of all ask the objector, John Powell. And as you know, sir, you have four minutes from when you start talking.
Chairman, as mentioned, I'm John Powell, I live in Old Park Lane, and I'm a committee member of Old Park Lane Residence Association, and I'm also representing with their agreement to other associations, North West Farnham, Upper Old Park, representing over three hundred households. We have to date provided support and encouragement to the neighbourhood plan, but this is one application too far. There is widespread and deep-seated concern, and our grounds for objection are as follows. Firstly, this proposed housing would be in the heart of a rural and agricultural part of Farnham, a precious and shrinking asset. The Old Park part of the ancient deer park provides a vital rural barrier separating Upper Hill from Farnham. A development of nine houses would be out of character in such a rural setting, add to the urban sprawl already threatening this part of Farnham, and set a dangerous precedent. Secondly, a longstanding High Court ruling made it clear that Old Park Lane is a bridle way with easements for residents to lose their vehicles and not a public highway open to all traffic. It is locally maintained by the residents at their own expense as needed. The major part of it is unmade, one vehicle wide and with deep ditches on either side. The local planning authority has no powers to impose conditions on the applicant to make improvements to Old Park Lane without the consent of the residents. Councillors will have noted that recommendation page seventy-four of the officer's report is permission be granted subject to the completion of a section 106 agreement to secure upgrade works to the public bridle way. However, this fails to include any reference to the residents' rights. We believe the lane is not suitable or appropriate for the sort of residential traffic which the development would generate. Old Park Lane already struggles to cope with existing levels of traffic, especially in winter, and residents do not accept the highways' conclusion that traffic will not increase, and we challenge the trip statistics used. Thirdly, Noel Rivers is very close to Park Farm, where the main agricultural activity is sheep farming. The farmer, Mr Rivers, is here this evening. The proposed housing development is directly opposite this yard and lamming sheds separated by no more than a bridle path. Mr Rivers remains highly concerned that the impact this development would have on his livelihood. Indeed, on pages thirty-four and thirty-five, the council's agricultural consultants advise that the close proximity of dwellings may adversely affect the viability of the current farming operation, and go on to say that should the owner have to diversify his business to survive, any application almost certainly be curtailed by a planning officer because of the proximity of the newly-built houses. Fourthly, the applicant's land suffers from a high level of decontamination, and any development will require the site to be decontaminated. Old Park Lane is not designed to withstand the weight and number of heavy vehicles needed to extract the huge amount of contaminated material. The applicant has refused, despite being asked by Surrey County Council, to estimate the quantity of truck movements to remove this waste. Our consultants estimated to be over two thousand lorry loads. Lastly, we are concerned by the applicant's history of non-compliance with conditions applied to previous planning decisions. These caused and continue to cause a significant loss of immunity value in the local area. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Powell. Now it's time to the town council, councillor Merrill Lee.
Farnham Town Council strongly objects to this proposal. Development of this site would appear intrusive and incongruous in the landscape and would notably harm the rural character of this area. No sites in this area are allocated in the neighbourhood plan or the emerging local plan due to accessibility to services, sustainability and landscape quality. Not surprisingly for a riding school, this site is positioned at the intersection of three bridle ways, not roads as the report indicates, but bridle ways. The access to this site therefore is completely unsuitable for a development of this scale and potentially hazardous for those residents riding their horses on the bridle way, a purpose for which it is primarily intended. The officer's report considers the development of small settlements and villages and notes that local planning authorities should avoid new isolated homes in the countryside. This site is not in a village, it is situated in the country significantly outside of the built-up area of the town. The application is in direct conflict with the existing local plan policy for countryside beyond the green belt and is bounded on two sides by the AGLV, the policy for which requires that strong protection will be given to ensure that conservation and enhancement of the landscape character. The emerging local plan landscape study concludes that the scope for development in this area is likely to be limited. It highlights only two exceptions to this statement, neither of which include this site. To approve this application would undermine the evidence supporting emerging local plan. Harm to landscape character is an important consideration in determining applications of this nature. Brandon Lewis pointed out to the inspectorate last month that while national parks, the broads, areas of outstanding natural beauty and heritage coasts quite rightly enjoy the highest degree of protection, outside of these designated areas, the impact of development on the landscape can be an important material consideration. He reminded that one of the twelve core principles at paragraph seventeen of the national planning policy framework is that plans and decisions should take into account the different roles and characters of different areas and recognise the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside to ensure that development is suitable for the local context. This is not a sustainable location for housing development of this scale. Whilst the NPPF emphasises the need to take account of the economic and social dimensions of development proposals, it also promotes the wider emphasis on delivering sustainable outcomes. The report in front of members this evening makes much of the outcomes of recent appeals, such as the sad loss of Gardiner's Hill Road in Farnham. This is not relevant to the current position. In order for members to make a decision this evening, they must note the current situation in relation to the five-year housing land supply following recent appeals and planning permissions granted. Not only should it be considered that the absence of a five-year housing land supply does not mean that housing development should be permitted anywhere, but only where it amounts to sustainable development. Members should also be equipped with up-to-date evidence prior to make any decisions this evening on the position of the Borough Council in relation to five-year housing supply. In any event, we must not be forced to be fearful of making the right decisions for our communities. Although the site adjoins existing local plan settlement boundary on its northern side, it is not as well integrated with the settlement area as some of the other promoted sites around Farnham, allocated in the emerging local plan and Farnham neighbourhood plan. The supposed benefits of developing this site do not outweigh the demonstrable harm to the landscape of our borough and the loss of immunity value of the local residents. This application should be refused. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Merrill Lee. Now it's time to Karen Clark.
Thank you, Chair. I'm here this evening on behalf of Mr and Mrs Ricketts and as the agent for the application. This is not an application to develop a greenfield site with reliance upon the lack of housing to prop it up. Instead, this is a carefully considered proposal to redevelop a brownfield commercial site that is contaminated and does comprise previously developed land. It is within easy reach of Farnham Town Centre, bus links and railway station. It contains buildings of little architectural value and substantial areas of concrete hard standing. It has the potential to generate significant vehicular movements in its lawful use and is of little nature conservation or ecological value. Local services, facilities and transport links are easily accessible from the site, more so than other sites recently allowed at appeal. It is sustainable in its location as reinforced by county highways and your own officers. The scheme reduced footprint and volume of built form on site and eliminates significant areas of hard standing. It actually consolidates the spread of development and introduces substantial landscaped areas. It is based on a high-quality design influenced by and responsive to its context. Good design will replace poor design. A meaningful landscape buffer is proposed along the northern boundary. This will create a soft edge and positively contribute to the landscape, to the local landscape. The existing mature hedge along Middle Old Park will be reinforced. The layout and design provide a green edge around the site and allow the dwellings to sit discreetly in their context. The residential use of the site is compatible in its context with the layout and additional landscaping offering further comfort. There exist dwellings closer to the adjacent farm than currently proposed. We acknowledge the concerns of Farnham Town Council and local residents in respect of access arrangements, but we have to be mindful that this site has a lawful commercial use. This is highly material and relevant. An independent traffic survey was undertaken in 2015. At this time, the livery use was not operating at capacity and the riding school was not operational at all. The baseline data does not therefore reflect the potential traffic that could be generated by the lawful commercial use of this site. Notwithstanding this, the transport assessment demonstrates that the proposed nine dwellings would generate less traffic than the commercial use. County highways conclude this data and the transport assessment to be robust. In offering support, county highways recommend conditions, one of which requires the submission and approval of a construction management plan. This would afford control throughout the demolition, remediation and construction stages, including control over the number of vehicles using Old Park Lane. We raise no opposition to this condition. Surrey County Council rights of way raise no objection to the residential use or the number of units proposed. The proposal would not prejudice the safety or ability to use the bridle way by any user as supported by county highways. The applicants have given commitment to facilitating improvements to the bridle way both before commencement and after completion of the development. This would be secured via a legal agreement. As such, the proposal would deliver improvements to the condition of Old Park Lane contrary to the concerns of residents. To summarise, this application successfully secures the redevelopment of a contaminated and previously developed land. It secures the delivery of high-quality housing. It secures less built form than currently exists and consolidates its spread within the site. It secures ecological and nature conservation enhancements. It secures improvements to the condition of Old Park Lane with fewer vehicle movements than could lawfully, than could be achieved with the lawful commercial use. And it affords protection to residential amenities of existing residents and those proposed. This sensitive scheme falls squarely within the definition of sustainable development for which there is a strong presumption in favour. We hope the committee will support the detailed assessment of this proposal by their planning officers, the support offered by the technical consultees and the recommendation to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Clark. Right, members, open it up to you and councillor Williams.
Thank you very much, Chairman. To the casual reader, this application seems to tick many of the boxes that you'd like to see in a planning application. I mean, they're really pretty pictures, it cleans up part of a contaminated brownfield site, and it's a reasonable geographical distance to Farnham. However, for those members who were lucky enough to visit the site yesterday, I hope they will appreciate that the reality is somewhat different and the site is far from suitable for nine family homes. The points raised by Farnham Town Council were very well made and need to be weighed carefully in balance of any decision-making that we make tonight, and I'm not going to go through them, but the things I found particularly pertinent is that no sites in this particular area have been included in the neighbourhood plan or the emerging local plan specifically due to the accessibility to services, its sustainability and its landscape value. The proposal is in direct conflict with the local plan policy for the countryside, in which members here tonight are meant to give strong protection to ensure the conservation and the enhancement of landscape character. In fact, the AMIC study, which we, this council, paid for and commissioned, specifically rules out development in this area, and that's what we're using to inform our local plan. If we start to criticise that, we are criticising the very basis of our local plan. The town's council comments on the five-year housing supply I found really interesting. I've done my calculations and I think that we've met it with a five percent buffer, but I'll let the officers perhaps explain what the number is. I also though that, because I spoke to her yesterday, councillor Merrill Lee, who was representing Farnham Town Council, is a very keen horse rider, and she told me that she wanted to spend far more time talking about the safety issues relating to horses on a bridle path. She wanted to relate stories of riding horses on single-track bridle ways with drivers, drivers of cars either late for dropping off their kids at school or, you know, hurrying pasta or being passed by delivery drivers of the latest gadget from Amazon. This is a serious issue, and with due respect to the highways authority, and despite the fact that they say safety is their primary consideration, the most serious hazard on this half-mile approach, this bridle way, this single track to the development, was not given any consideration at all. I wonder if they even visited the site, or was it just a matter of they were looking at their spreadsheets and there wasn't an icon for horses? I don't know. As the ward member for this area, I'd like to focus on a couple of points, a couple of issues which directly affect the community. Firstly, as it was mentioned by Mr Powell, the agricultural adviser clearly says that it would make it more difficult for Park Farm to continue its longstanding business of sheep farming. I think they're in their third generation now. As we saw on the site visit, the ewes were giving birth while lamming five yards away from the garden of number nine. Could we see a picture of that, rather than that schematic? Could we see the actual plan? For those, yeah, for those people who were not there, Park Farm, where it says Park Farm, is in fact a covered barn, the lamming area is to the right of that, and at the moment, sheep are lamming, they're lamming within five yards of number seven. I've been told since I first raised this in December last year, when it was raised to me by one of the residents, that some form of mitigation was going to be done. Nothing, nothing at all in that time has materialised. I mean, the only thing I can see, which is the removal of the three houses, seven, eight and nine, which the agricultural adviser had an issue with. But perhaps more important, importantly, he goes on to say that should this development proceed, no planning officer would ever give permission for the owner of Park Farm to diversify into other forms of animal husbandry. to diversify into other forms of animal husbandry because of its proximity to and the loss of the amenity by the owners of those new properties which were being asked to approve. In simple terms, this development would make Park Farm, according to him, pretty much unviable and it would probably force it into bankruptcy. I mean, you may ask, so what? You know, farms are going bankrupt all the time. In reality, this is a rural community. It's not an urban environment and the farmer is one of the glues that holds it altogether, not only by repairing that bridleway, which Surrey County Council has never touched, but also by clearing the ditches, cutting the hedges, helping with security in this rural environment. This has got to be a material consideration and if it's not, it should be. Other major concerns of the, of the local community is the half-mile bridle, bridle path, the access to this site. Because I've, I've never driven up it, I've only walked, I'm going to leave it to other members who were present to describe their experiences and whether they think it's appropriate. But I would like to mention just a few, a few facts. I'd like to confirm, because I've got a copy of it, confirm the local residents' comments that a High Court ruling was found in favour of the residents against Farnham Urban District Council. They wanted to upgrade the bridleway. The ruling clearly states that it was to be maintained at a level suitable for horses and pedestrians. The private, the bridleway is privately owned. The few houses and the farm that come off that bridleway have specific easements and rights written into their deeds, rights of way written into their deeds. I'm not sure whether the stables do have any specific easements or rights of way for vehicle traffic other than the planet, this planning department having said at some stage that it was a lawful development. Six families own and stable horses on the bridleway so they can safely exercise them. A number have specifically bought houses in that location for that, for that reason. Finally, this is, this is a rural environment. It's positioned as it is in one of the most important historic deer parks in the country and urbanisation has absolutely no part to play in its development. Wavleys should be absolutely proud to have such an important historic asset and we, for our part, should do all in our, all in our powers, as the policy says, to ensure its conservation and enhancement. For the benefit of the applicant's planning consultant who objected to the online petition signed by over 200 residents who wanted to try and save this great park, saying it was misleading in a formal rebuttal which is online, I can inform her that this area is part of the great or the old park. It was set up by William the Conqueror's grandson and hunted by kings and queens for hundreds of years before the adjacent new park, or as it's called now, Farnham Park, was formed. We're incredibly fortunate that much of all, that this old park still repaying, remains. The supposed benefits claimed for this development come in my view with a major health warning, which is not contamination. Unless I hear anything else this evening which might sway in my mind, these supposed benefits absolutely in no way outweigh the demonstrable harm to the landscape and these precious assets, the great park and the ancient bridleway, which have been protected by the, the people of Farnham for millennia. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank councillor Williamson. How's it, Colin?
Thank you, Chairman. There's not really a lot left to say. Thank you, councillor Williamson. I'll leave somebody else to describe the journey by car along the bridleway. I was in a four-by-four and got there relatively safely and easily, apart from annoying one of the residents. But it's somebody else. I think the chairman's experience of leaving was slightly more horrific. I couldn't agree more with you. When I read the report, contaminated land, brownfield site, nine houses, tick, tick, tick. You know, what's there not to like? And fortunately, I think it was councillor MacLeod suggested the site visit and we all went off to have a look at this. And as it so happened, I was actually researching the great park for the, some work I'm doing. And it was interesting just to read the history of that part of the land because we are trying to protect it as a town. But it was interesting reading the history of the great park, the old park as it now is, St Swithin's Way, Harrow Way, all the history connected with that part. And it is very special. It's also part, although slightly obscurely, of the setting of the castle because again, the castle, one of our greatest historic buildings in the borough, sits within its parkland. And although that has now moved east of Folly Hill, it is still part of the history that the great park went across both. In fact, Folly Hill was a piece of wasteland between two parts of the park, I gather, at one time. When we look at these pictures here, there's an absence of various things that we saw on site. And there's also an absence of some of the implications of the development. Cars, for example, we've got nice neat little spaces. We haven't got hundreds of cars that are actually going to be sitting in that courtyard that I'm looking at at the moment. And I don't think, you can see the pylons from there. This, I have to say, I think there's a little bit of cadology here. I really do. When we set off down this road, in fact councillor Williamson was walking down the road or hobbling or whatever, not making very fast progress. And in fact, he asked for a lift, but I'm afraid my car was, as usual, absolutely full. So, you know, apart from squeezing in on the baby seat at the back, there was no chance. But, you know, it was just a long, long drive down a bridleway. That's all you can say about it. It's not a road, it's a bridleway. And when you come to this area itself, we've got this intersection of several bridleways. That's what the land is there for. It's a rural setting. Doesn't matter what the past use is, it's a rural setting. And of course, in the past, the great park always did have certain industries to back up the work of the castle, for example. So, you know, we are looking at a historic site here. Yes, it's contaminated and yes, the buildings are ugly and need replacing. But do we really destroy something beautiful to mop up somebody else's mess, if you like? Because that's what really we're being asked to do. The site is really a mess and the field adjacent to it that we had to look at is even worse. So, you know, we are looking at a site which you could say would look better with some of these houses, but not in this area. There's plenty of places in Farnham where this would be absolutely fine, but this is not one of them, I'm afraid. The bridleway, the history, talking about the farm, we had a look, and I raised this earlier. Councillor Williamson is absolutely right. Your, the back of the number is at seven. It's a stone's throw from where these lambs were yesterday. Absolutely no protection. At the moment, the building doesn't have light or particular noise, but a house will, you know. And a farmer who's been farming there for generations deserves to be treated with some form of respect. This is a farming community. The old park was given out to farming, for farmholdings. That's what it was divvied up for. You know, it is an agricultural area, a part of Farnham. So, I'm afraid I agree. I don't know whether it was, which speaker wrote down, but it is intrusive. It is incongruous. It's just the wrong place to do this. And I really don't think we should be putting in something poor just because what's there is even worse. I really do think we have to get this development right. This, this area has been protected. We want to protect it as a town. As councillor Williamson says, the borough wants to protect it. So why on earth we're thinking of allowing something like this, which is bound to destroy the quality of life of the residents around it, to say nothing of the animals? And really, I just can't support this in any way whatsoever.
Councillor Frost.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. I do agree with my two colleagues who have just spoken. So I will in fact be brief. I think this is an inappropriate place for this particular development. I mean, the development itself might be lovely, but this is not the right place for it. And I think for us to, I'm surprised at the officer's recommendation. And the reason I'm surprised is when I turn to page forty and I look at the third paragraph down, the MPPF states that as a core principle, "The intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside shall be recognised." We haven't done that here. You know, that is a beautiful area. It is an ancient area and we are sticking nine houses or proposing to stick nine houses in the middle of it. I think it's totally inappropriate for what we have. And it also says, "The site is located within the countryside beyond the greenbelt, wherein the countryside shall be protected for its intrinsic character and beauty." We're not doing that. We're destroying it. And this is the thin end of the wedge. Because once we agree to destroy our bit of countryside there and the ancient area that we have, we already have another application for a hundred and something houses on Castle Hill, on the green built site, greenfield site. I think this is inappropriate and I am surprised at that we have a recommendation to grant.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Fraser.
Thank you, Chairman. Indeed, there is very little else that can be added to the weight of comment that's been made by my colleagues. Under normal circumstances, one would welcome redevelopment on a brownfield site. This is a contaminated land. I will do some practical comments on some of the major issues. This is contaminated land. One's first thought is remediation. But if remediation involves digging up and trucking 2,000 lorry loads of contaminated soil through Farnham or its environment, I will say the best engineering solution will be to leave it exactly where it is and cover it with concrete or clay. Second point, by digging it out and replacing it with topsoil and building the buildings as shown in a dish, simply to get the ridge lines to line up, is foolishness of highest order. This is a very wet area at the bottom of a clay hill. The likelihood of flooding in that dish is very high. It would make more sense to cut the building size down to match rather than dig a hole. Number three, the bridle path, my, my car looked as if it'd been travelling for a day in Africa. That road is appalling and I think just patching the holes before and after will be quite insufficient. It is a bridleway. There is a going concern, an equestrian school just south of this site, which their access is on to the main bridle path, Old Park Lane. They must be appalled by the thought that their riders, their horses are going to be put at such risk. I say no more on that one. Love's been said. Immediately on the north side of what's termed a landscape buffer, there is a 175 kilovolt three-phase line, which is not only an ISO, but some would maintain is sufficiently threatening to devalue houses numbers three, four, five and six. Enough said on that one. The farm, I feel sorry for the farmer, Park Farm. At the moment, he's got lamming sheep. And although it says in here is a 15 metre gap between the curtilage, it's, it's a printing error. It's five metres between the curtilage line of number seven, as planned, and the fence to the lamming pen at Park Farm. Five metres. And that is five metres on the scale of the drawings I have in front of me. Should that farmer wish to diversify to cows or pigs, the prevailing south-west wind will carry methane into the development. That would be nice. Worse still, it would be chickens because nitrous oxide levels would be higher than in Farnham Town Centre. I rest my case. I believe this is objectionable on so many points. I've got blue tabs all the way through the agenda and I am appalled that our officers, our planning officers have come to the conclusion that this should be approved. Thank you.
Councillor Polls.
I think for once I actually agree with everything that's been said, including councillors Williamson and Fraser. So I'm not saying any more. They've summed it up very well.
Councillor MacLeod.
Thank you, Chairman. As others have said, when I first read the report, I could quite understand why the officers recommended granting permission. It's a brownfield site, adds a few more houses. It's a contaminated site, something needs to be done about that. The business apparently isn't viable anymore, so something needs to be done. And this perhaps would, would on first sight appear to be the solution. But the site visit, and I have to give credit to councillor Williamson, I supported the site visit, but it was actually councillor Williamson who requested it. The site visit really provided me with a great many concerns. I can add to the experience. I think the chairman's going to say something about leaving the site. I think I was the last person who left the site, about two minutes after councillor Williamson walking down the site. And when I was perhaps a few hundred yards down the track, I met a small van coming the other way. So I stopped and he stopped. I wasn't sure if I was supposed to back up or he was supposed to back up. So I actually got out of the van after we'd both been looking at each other for a couple of minutes. And he told me that the passing place behind him was much further away than the passing base behind me. So I had to do the backing up about 150 yards roughly. And I found that quite difficult. And that was actually in a sunny day with good weather. You have to be very careful not to go into the ditch on either side. And as I was backing up, actually, a large vehicle appeared, the vehicle that we all saw taking the sewage away from one of the tanks and went into the passing place that I was heading for. So I actually had to sort of negotiate that. And we did manage to both squeeze into the passing place. So the van eventually passed by. Then I set off again and a few hundred yards further down, I met a Land Rover. Unfortunately, on this occasion, I have to say, it was near to a passing place, so that didn't cause too much problem on that occasion. But what that led me to think about, I think one of the things that Tim put up was residential immunity. And I think we have to think about the residential immunity, not just of the existing residents, but what about the people who are actually going to live in the houses? We're told that this site is a kilometre and a half from the town centre and two kilometres from the railway station. Now, if I was to buy a house in this site, the last thing I would want would be my children or my wife walking down or cycling down this very narrow track, particularly in bad weather, particularly when it was dark. So we need to be considering the residential immunity of the people who are actually going to live there, not just the existing residents. And despite what Surrey highways say, we seem to have this problem, the Surrey highways all the time, that they recommend everything. You sometimes wonder if we need Surrey highways, why don't they just give standing advice that they'll accept every proposal? But leaving that aside, I just think that track is a real problem. And then there's the general thing of the appropriateness of the site. That's been well covered by other people, so I don't think I need to cover it. It just seems to me to be in the wrong place. I would also have concerns about farmer. I mean, it's said in the report that he can change to being a pig farmer. Perhaps he doesn't want to change to being a pig farmer. He's a, he's a sheep farmer and that would involve him with quite a lot of cost. And who's going, who's going to compensate him for that? So all in all, you know, although in first sight it seems like a good, good proposal, and when you read the report, if you make a site visit, I think it leads you to the view that we shouldn't support this one. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you indeed. I will just mention my trip down the track bridleway, as it's been mentioned before. I was behind the honey wagon. Spent a long time there and I tell you what, if councillor Williamson was walking home, I didn't catch him up. I was probably 20 minutes getting down that track. It was I was probably twenty minutes getting down that track, it was a real mess. But I now live in Hinedge, I used to live in Farnham, but we have a road, a boundary road, in Farnham, leads to the health centre. Fourteen thousand people are registered in that doctor's health centre. It was a tarmac road, potholes developed in that road, they were something nine inches to a foot deep, you couldn't even drive an invalid trike up there. So if you were poorly, you were very badly placed. They filled in the potholes, very good, at some considerable expense. Down came the rain, traffic up and down, potholes reappeared. And what I saw on Old Park Lane was, you talked about Africa, I'm not sure it was Africa, I haven't seen that much rain and mud in Africa, but I worried about the car itself. I just don't see it as an access. But what appalled me was the contamination, not of the site, but the surrounding area, and that was something that did not fit in with Farnham. The Farnham is beautiful and lovely, and the Deer Park and everything else should be maintained. And I can't see this as a remedial process, I really can't. What would happen with all the trucks going up and down the road, unless it was tarmac, and it won't be, it's a bridle path, they're not going to get permission for that? You would have to have a vehicle sweeping the 287 Folly Hill continually, like they do at Rumfold on the sandpit there and still do. It would be a slippery slope. So the thousands of vehicles required to remove the contaminated land to bring back the soil, I'm sorry, I just don't see it as a way forward. So I hear what my colleagues have said, and I'll perhaps hand over to my deputy, because she's got further comments.
No, it's just something, nobody's really mentioned, they've touched on, but this word sustainability and the advice we get from Surrey, as Chancellor MacLeod said, it doesn't always strike us as logical. And here we have what is described as a sustainable site, because it's two kilometres from the station, and we can all cycle two kilometres. Well, I will put money on perhaps Councilors Frost, Hargreaves and myself getting to the station at a pinch with a fair wind behind. I don't know quite how we get along the bridleway, but presumably we have to push our bikes there. But I don't think a single one of us in this thing, with perhaps the exception of Emma, will get back up. I mean, do they really know what the topography of Farnham is and how the roads link together? Because sometimes the statements that Surrey County Council make just don't make any sense. This is not sustainable, if sustainability means you don't have to use a car, because the only means of access you're going to have is a car. You imagine walking from here, we've already told you how difficult it is to drive along it, so you walk to Waitrose. And you've got to walk back, they're not going to flatten the hills for you on the way back, you know. To me, as a very practical person, somebody living in the real world, if something is sustainable, I'll back it. But I'm sorry, this is not sustainable by any definition, because there is no other way to get to and from the station, unless you're an Olympic athlete.
All right. Members, are there any other questions, or are our officers to respond? Peter, Tim?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I think we can sort of understand where the discussion's going. I think there's some points of principle and technical matters which just want to draw to your attention to consider. There's some discussion early on about the neighbourhood plan, the local plan and where that is, in terms of what weight we can give to it. Page forty-three of the agenda talks about prematurity. There was discussion around that it was in conflict with the local plan, emerging, current local plan and the neighbourhood plan. You see, we set out on page forty-three, given the current positions and progress with the neighbourhood plan, the emerging local plan, we can only give them very limited weight, if any at all. So that's just a matter of factual point, and so if members were looking to go down that route that is in conflict with emerging plans, our advice is clear on page forty-three with regards to that position. The site is a brownfield site, I don't think that's disputed. There's an emphasis within the MPPF to locate development within those locations, and it's appropriate for redevelopment to take place on brownfield sites in suitable locations. So picking up on that, there was a discussion around the harm to the landscape and the historic landscape and all those points. The current buildings do not currently complement that, the surrounding landscape. The proposed dwellings are of a good standard, of quality, designed around a similar layout on that point. And in terms of the actual impact on the landscape, there was reference to officers not taking account of that, but there is actually a very detailed assessment in terms of firstly the impact on the countryside beyond the Greenbelt from page fifty of the agenda, and then moving on to talk about the visual impacts. So we have assessed that in detail and provided that for you. I mean, that is a judgment, and that's for members to take, but just to confirm, we have done that exercise, comparison with the current condition, with that proposed presumption that goes in favour of housing development, our current position, and weighed that into the account as well, and the weight that can be afforded to the relevant policies in those areas. But notwithstanding, it is a brownfield site, so therefore the purpose of a policy such as C2 is limited, because at the moment it doesn't particularly contribute in its current form to protection of countryside. I'll move to the point on highways, there's a lot of discussion around the legal routes and rights across the site. When I finish, I will pass over to the council solicitor just to pick up on the lawful access to the site, but there's just a few points which hopefully will help. We have to take account that it is a current commercial site, with a current vehicular traffic generation resulting, and a comparison has to be made of what is existing and what is proposed in terms of the highway. So page fifty-five of your agenda talks about what the likely vehicle movements are, and I note the comments regarding the county council, but they are required to provide us with advice on traffic movement. And it talks about in the third from bottom paragraph, a total of eighty-eight vehicles counted entering the site on the days of surveys. There may be comments about that, but the county council have confirmed that that is acceptable in terms of the assessment, and officers have to be guided by that. And then it moves on to look at the forecast of what's proposed, which suggests fifty-four vehicle daily movements, which is lower than the current position. So those conflicts that you've raised will already occur. You know, it's not something that doesn't exist already, and it doesn't happen on that bridleway, and it is a lawful access, as Barry Devlin will talk you through. So that's just a point of fact from the highways' point of view, and we just want to confirm that the highways officer and the public rights of way officer have visited the site, and they're well aware of the current situation, and that has informed their view. So I think, just pass over to the planning solicitor to pick up on that point, and Louise Yandell will also pick up on a couple of points regarding the agricultural impact. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to put the position with regard to the bridleway with due deference to views expressed in committee tonight, because what I have to say goes quite against the grain of that. The bridleway status has been asserted by people tonight to be a private bridleway. Well, there was no such thing as a private public bridleway, if you will. The bridleway, the surface of the bridleway is vested in the county highway authority. It's as simple as that, it is a public highway and the surface is owned by the public authority. That is the general law. But further to that, we reconfirm the status of this route, this bridleway, not just relying on the initial consultation response. And I've confirmed that with two senior footpath officers with regard to this bridleway, and I've been sent an extract to the county definitive map, and the key there too. And county footpaths state, and I've got two names, it's not just a blank anonymous person, our records show Old Park Lane as a public bridleway as recorded on the definitive map and statement, which together form the legal record of public rights of way. The lane coexists as a private vehicular access to a number of properties. The first hundred and ninety metres from Castle Hill, which I understand is at the bottom, is an all-purpose vehicular highway maintainable by the county council as a highway authority. So they are saying, in fact, the bottom length of this route is not the bridleway, it carries higher vehicular rights. And I think it probably is something that we describe as a by-way open to all traffic, but certainly there is acceptance on the public record of a high level of vehicular usage of this bridleway. And then they're going to say, there is no evidence on our historic file about any agreement from the nineteen fifties. So the inference there is there's nothing on the public record about this High Court judgment. So we then did extensive searches of legal databases to try and find this judgment, and I'm not saying it wasn't decided, but we could not find on two legal database searches any High Court judgment. In fact, I think there was an inquiry into this way in the nineteen fifties, and there was one objection, which was subsequently withdrawn, and it was confirmed as a public bridleway, so this is contemporaneous with this High Court judgment.
Chairman, I'm so sorry. I don't think, this is all very interesting, but I don't think any of us disputed that this is not a bridleway. We acknowledge it's a bridleway, but what we're saying is we believe it's unsuitable to serve an estate of houses. That's where we're saying, we're not saying that we're disputing this, and this is all very interesting, the information, but we're just saying we believe that this bridleway is inappropriate to service an estate of houses. And if it's got a boat at the end, it's even more unsuitable to serve an estate of houses. So I'm sorry to have interrupted the solicitor, but we weren't arguing about that, we just said it was unsuitable to service the houses, because of the type of bridleway it was, the fact there was a boat at the bottom, and the width. Now, I didn't see anything in the report that they were going to widen it. So please forgive me for having interrupted you, but I just felt that we weren't arguing with you. We agree with you, it's a boat, and it's a bridleway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to be on the record as saying this is a boat. All I'm saying is I have it stated from county footpaths that the bottom end of the bridleway is accepted to have, quote unquote, all-purpose vehicular use. Now, I think it's important to recite all of this, because if you follow through with your logic about the status of, the practical status of this route, and it's a bar to this development, it seems to me you're going to compose one of the decisions to refuse, if you're going that way, is going to be on highway grounds. Now, I think everything we have ascertained from county highways leads us to a position where we would have no highway grounds for refusal, and that, I'm afraid, is the net position. So, but you were wondering where I was going with my legal analysis, and that was where I was going. Chancellor Frost.
Yeah.
So, what's recommended in the report is a way forward whereby the county council and the borough council would join into an agreement under Planning Act powers and Hires Act powers, whereby the county council would, if you will, bear responsibility to get this right and to have the surface compacted and constructed to an appropriate standard, which, to the view of your officers, would provide a suitable access to the site. And in my analysis, that is legally correct and achievable. So on that, Mr. Chairman, I will conclude my remarks.
Thank you very much, Barry. Louise, do you want to come in first? I have two councillors after that.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a comment to make about the proximity of the residential dwellings to Park Farm. Members will note on page fifty-eight of the agenda that the farmholding would be twenty-two metres from the closest building, although it is acknowledged that the farm would be closer to the residential curtilage associated with those dwellings. It should also be noted that the agricultural consultants' objections were on the basis of future development on the farm, which could be restricted by residential development in this close proximity to the site. However, the farm occupies a large area where future development may be possible further away from the residential dwellings. Furthermore, members will be aware that it would not be reasonable to refuse development on the basis that future development would not be able to take place on an adjoining site. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Chancellor Fraser, do you want to come back first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like, if possible, in a few moments, to add a bit of weight to those clauses of our emerging local plan and neighbourhood plan, which will protect our visual amenities. I know this probably has no legal import at the moment, but the House of Lords, Paper one hundred, issued on the nineteenth of February, from the Select Committee on National Policy for the Built Environment, which they've entitled Building Better Places, has four clauses which are very germane to this business of assessing weight. Their summary, clause sixty-three, urges councils, authorities, all of you, to give more weight to emerging national plans, neighbourhood plans. Summary sixty-four asks, please, for authorities to streamline neighbourhood plans and to hold local forums. Summary clause sixty-five promotes community engagement. We don't get too much of that, do we? And clause sixty-six, planning permission, when in conflict with an emerging neighbourhood plan, should take due note of the emerging restrictions and not diminish the weight. This, no doubt, will have to go forward to the Secretary of State for communities and local government before it's endorsed, but I would urge you, if you've got the patience, get on the web and read this, because you're out of kilter with our noble lords. If you've got the patience, they're nothing if not verbose. But we should take note of the fact that weight, greater weight, should be given to those clauses which are held in this limbo, waiting for the local plan and the neighbourhood plan to be approved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think really it's a recommendation and aspiration at the moment, not yet law, but I understand what you're saying. Chancellor Williamson.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to just go back to the bridleway and try and put a line underneath it if I can, because I think we've probably discussed it enough. I think I agreed with most of the things that the officers said, certainly at the start. I just wish that when I'd mentioned it to the officers in November of last year, that there was a High Court ruling and that I had a copy of it, that they'd asked for it. It is by Justice, Lord Justice Abjon, nineteen fifty-three, at the High Court sessions. I don't know whether anybody here has got a copy of it, I haven't brought it with me this evening, but it's quite clear, it's in words of one syllable, and I'm surprised you can't find it on the search engines. However, again, I don't think anybody is arguing that the county council, under current legislation, doesn't have the right to maintain... legislation, doesn't have the right to maintain the top inch, I think it is, of a bridleway. Sorry?
Okay. So that's all, sir?
Okay. Well, two spits. Two spits. Sounds a lot. Depends how far you... Right. To maintain, to maintain that at proper health, that they haven't done so far, and it's been maintained by the residents for the last hundred years, whatever. However, the issue is that it can only, that that doesn't dictate ownership of the actual lane, and the ownership, no, 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 it doesn't, with respect, it dictates the ownership of the top two spits. It does not dictate the ownership of the bridleway. The bridleway itself, I understand, is...
Why is he laughing?
The bridleway itself is owned separately. The issue is basically the easements on that, and the fact that the residents have a specific ability to travel on it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I think we're wandering a little from the planning application that we have before us, but councillor McLeod...
If I could just add a comment, Mr. Chairman. The thing that strikes me about this bridleway issue is that the thing that Surrey highways are missing is that it's not so much the number of, the amount of the traffic will increase, it's the nature of the traffic will be entirely different. The current people going to the site, it's to do with being a stable station centre, which is a leisure activity. The people who live in the site are going to be everyday families, they'll be going shopping, they'll be going to work, and they'll have different types of cars, they'll have ordinary cars rather than four-by-fours. And I think there's a very significant difference between the two activities, that people going to work, going to the station, they can't afford to be held up by people coming the other way, or the midst of trains and so on. If you're coming to the site to do your horse-owning activities, that's a leisure activity. The nature of the traffic is entirely different, in my opinion, and that seems to be an important point, and that seems to me to relate to residential amenity, regardless of what Surrey highways say. So that's my comment, Chairman.
Fine. Thank you very much, indeed. No further questions? Let's move to the recommendation. Recommendation A is that subject to completion of 106 agreements secure upgrade works to the public bridleway, SUDS management plan, open space management plan, and SPA contributions within three months of the committee meeting, and subject conditions 1 to 19, and as amended by condition 15 in regards to the details of the full sewerage scheme to be submitted, and informatives 1 to 9 on pages 74 to 83, permission be granted. Can I have a show of hands, those in favour of that recommendation?
None.
Those against?
That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Abstentions?
One. Yes, yeah, then no problem.
Recorded, thank you very much. Therefore, I need an alternative recommendation, proposal and second and reasons for.
I'll kick off, and then somebody can correct what I've said. Of course, I've got to put in an alternative, haven't I? I would suggest that planning permission be refused, for various reasons, and I'm sure the officers will put them in a lot better phraseology than I have. I've just noted the urbanising style of development, which is unsuitable for this rural location, the close proximity of the curtilage of one of the residential units to an existing farm, with no evidence of mitigation measures. The general impact on the rural ambience of the increased residential traffic, if you want to make that the difference, of the different nature of the people, so the impact on the rural ambience of the increased residential traffic as people access the services by car, because if these are family homes, realistically, they're going to be by car. And I don't know how we put this, but councillor Frost, I think I wrote it down from you, that basically we feel the bridleway is unsuitable to sustain those vehicular movements because of the type and nature of the vehicular movements. So how you put that, I'm not quite sure. That do for starters.
I think we need to emphasise far more the impact on the neighbouring farm, not just in terms of, basically, if this were to go ahead, his business is finished. That's what this report is basically saying, because he's, you know, he's then so constricted in what he can do in the future. So I think we need to bear a great deal more and be far more robust in what we say there. I'm not quite sure of the wording, but I think we really need to beef that up. And we need to really actually, the bridleway and the traffic movements and everything, that's fine, that is a real concern, but we also need to think far more about the impact overall on the countryside beyond the green belt and the visual amenity, and we need to make sure that we've got something there as well that we're mentioning, because I think those two are crucial as well.
Councillor Frost.
You might go to page 59, policy D1 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, which still exists, states that the council will have regard to the environmental implications of development and will promote and encourage enhancement of the environment. Development will not be permitted where it would result in material detriment to the environment by virtue of loss of general amenity. I think that applies in this instance.
Councillor Williamson, I think you're first this time.
Thanks, Chairman. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to mention something about the historical deer park, because it's quite important to Farnham and something that we want to protect and includes within the neighbourhood plan. So I think that historical element, the protection of those assets needs to be included. And I wasn't sure whether Carol mentioned it, the safety issues in respect of not just pedestrians, but it is a bridleway, it is, despite our legal advice, it is primarily for horses and pedestrians, that's what it's there for. So the safety issues in relation to those users, those horse users.
Chairman, if I could just start our general comment, we've been taking some notes, and we do have some suggestions around putting wording around some of those thoughts, but what I would say, and you've heard me say this before in this chamber, that it's better to have one or two or three strong, robust reasons, rather than throw too many at it and undermine your case. So I think what we're trying to do is gather your thoughts together in a few reasons which will be hopefully defensible on your part if this goes to appeal. And I think Louise has got some words to suggest for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman. And the first one is in relation to the impact on Park Farm. The proposal would be incompatible with the existing use at Park Farm, as it would compromise the existing farming operations, contrary to policies D1, D2, and RD9 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan, and paragraph 17 and 28 of the MPPF. The second one is in relation to the bridleway. The proposal would be detrimental to the uses of the existing bridleway, contrary to policies D1, D4, and LT11 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan, and paragraph 17 of the MPPF. And then the final one is a visual one, in relation to the countryside and the deer park. The urbanisation of the site by reason of the scale, mass, and siting of the proposed buildings will be detrimental to the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside and the character of the deer park. And I haven't got the policies together for that, so if you can allow me to add those.
Councillor Fraser, do you want to come back?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think what I have to say will probably be one of those items that could be considered expendable, but I'd like it to be noted that digging up contaminated land into 2,000 lorries and trucking it away through the town is not to be recommended, but encapsulation, entombment of the offending material is probably a preferred option.
Bit difficult, but...
Chairman, I would guard against a reason for refusal on contaminated land grounds. The issues are dealt with in the report. There wouldn't be a robust reason for that, and associated with the construction process, of course, is transient, and whilst concerns can be mopped up in the way of perhaps conditions in the event of an approval, it wouldn't be appropriate to refuse permission on the basis of any perceived harm in relation to the construction process. Concern is recognised, but that will be my advice. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, indeed. I think, members, you've heard the recommendations as voiced by Louise Yandle. Go back.
Sorry, could I also add that there would also need to be a further two reasons for refusal, because the legal agreement has not yet been signed. That is on page, sorry, page 83 of the agenda. There is one in relation to the upgrading works to the public bridleway, the subs management plan, and the open space management plan, and then the second one in relation to the failure to enter into the legal agreement to secure SANGs. Thank you. Following advice from our borough solicitor, if we can amend reason one on page 83 of the agenda, to take out the upgrading works to the bridleway, because it would contradict reason, the second reason that I read out, that members wanted to refuse the application on.
Right, are we there? Are you all clear on what we're voting on? Recommendation to refuse with the recommendations as just outlined by Louise Yandle. Okay, those in favour of refusal, please show.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you very much. Thank you all, let's move on. Councillor Storey is, is he, yeah, it's Coates here, I think. Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, it's getting very hot in here. You're right.
Which would be air-conditioned or...
I think we'll soon be cool. Louise would like it on for a minute. No expense spared. Right, members, we move on to the non-public speaking items. B1, erect a two-storey extension following demolition of the existing conservatory at 28 Fernhill Lane, Farnham, GU90JJ. Kayleigh, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chairman. This application has been brought before the area committee because the applicant is a member of staff. The application site, outlined in red, is located to south-west of Fernhill Lane. The application site comprises a two-story semi-detached dwelling with several outbuildings. The neighbouring semi-detached dwelling is located to the south of 28. There are further residential dwellings to the north-west of the site. This photograph shows the elevation and the side elevation of the dwelling, with the existing conservatory just here. This photograph shows the rear elevation and the side elevation. The application seeks permission for the demolition of the existing conservatory just here, and the erection of a two-story side extension here. The block plan shows trees here and here. The top image shows the ground floor plan. Below to the left is the first floor plan, and to the right is the second floor plan, showing the gable roof design. This shows the proposed front elevation, the extension can be seen here. It also shows that proposed materials would match those of the existing dwelling, with the exception of the white timber windows. This shows the proposed side elevation, and this shows the proposed rear elevation, with the side extension here. It also shows an eavesdormer window here. These are the matters of principle and technical judgment, the principle of development, the parking space provision, and the impact on trees. These are matters of planning judgments which councillors are asked to consider this evening, the impact on visual amenity, and the impact on residential amenity. The recommendation is that permission be granted, as set out on pages 95 to 97 of the agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Potter.
Chairman, thank you. This is in my ward. I know the property, the site, been passed it on numerous occasions, and I think it's a, you know, a good design, it actually really improves the property, the materials and everything are in keeping, I have absolutely no problem with this, and I absolutely fully support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Anyone else? Before we move to the recommendation, recommendation is permission be granted, subject conditions 1 to 3, informative 1 to 3, on pages 95 to 97. Please show those in favour.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you very much, indeed. That completes the meeting. Thank you all very much, indeed. Thank you all very much indeed.